PM, so I'm going to call to order the Joint City Council and Planning Commission Work Session. Obviously, we're having a hybrid meeting tonight. We have a number of councilors that are attending remotely, and it looks like a number of Planning Commission members that are attending remotely as well. We will need everybody to really speak into their mics, as always, but especially in terms of keeping things moving along today, if everybody will be very conscientious of having their mics close to them, that's in everybody that's on the dais or in council chambers. And I see Council President Adam Garvin is here as well, and so we will get going here, turning right over to our Planning Director Heather Richards to introduce natural features and natural hazards planning. Except I don't see Heather Richards on the line, and I'm wondering...
Good evening, Mayor Tom Shauer, Senior Planner. I am here on behalf of Heather Richards to introduce our consultants this evening for the work session. So I'll believe Greg Winroad is in the waiting room here, ready to join. So this is a work session on natural hazards and natural features. Those are respectively statewide, relate to statewide Planning Goals Five and Seven, dealing with the natural features being Goal Five and natural hazards being Goal Seven. We've been working with Winterbrook Planning on doing work on these two items together. Greg Winroad is the Principal of Winterbrook Planning. So they've been doing work to basically three major components of the work related to planning for natural features and natural hazards. Some of this work follows from the work that was done on the urban growth boundary. So as we move forward with expanded urban growth boundaries, necessary to update our resource inventories for those new lands that come into the urban growth boundary, and in some cases to undertake planning for the urban growth boundary area as a whole, if some of that work hasn't previously been conducted as well. So Winterbrook has been working on doing the inventory of the host of different natural hazards and features, establishing, as many of these are overlapping and in some cases interrelated, helping us develop a framework for how to look at these features from a policy perspective and include recommendations on an implementation strategy. Winterbrook will also be helping us conduct what's called the EC Analysis, ESE, looking at how the...
Are you hungry? If everybody could just keep themselves muted when they're not on, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
So looking at the analysis of how economic, environmental, social consequences relate to one another in protecting and managing resources, and then also helping us prepare the findings. So we have Greg here this evening to, I'm going to turn it over to him here to walk through the work they've been doing. He'll start out with a high-level review and then is prepared to go more in-depth as needed on different topics of interest. And following the work session this evening, we anticipate starting the public hearing process coming forward, I believe, starting towards the end of July or early August. So taking, starting to conduct the public hearings with the Planning Commission and Council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Hey, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can all hear you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm having to yell across the room. So thank you for this opportunity. With me is Jamie Crawford, who has done most of the mapping work, some of the writing work on this proposal, on this actually multi-year effort now. As I, as was introduced, we're really looking at a combination of natural resources and natural features. And I have a slideshow to help us through this reasonably complex process. And that should come up shortly, I think. All righty. So what Heather and I and the staff have been working on for the last several years now, I think it's going on three, is what we're calling an Integrated Natural Features Program comprised of both natural resources and natural hazards. And the reason we are calling this an integrated program is because there's a lot of overlap between mapped resources and hazards. A big part of the program relates to tree protection in both areas. And occasionally, as we'll talk about, sometimes natural resource protection can have conflicts with natural hazards, for example, tree growths and wildfire hazards. And this is, this type of approach is something that we have been doing for over 20 years now at Winterbrook, beginning in Think Lake Oswego, City of Corvallis, and City of West Lynn in the Portland area, as well as some smaller communities. This program, I will say, is the most ambitious program we've entered into, and it has been helped a great deal by our GIS mapping capability. So, next slide, please. So what is the sort of state and local policy basis for doing what we're doing? We started with the state. We have statewide planning Goal Five, which talks about natural and scenic resources, and asks local governments to adopt programs to protect these resources, inventory them, adopt policies, adopt implementation measures, zoning measures, to protect them. And the same is true of Goal Seven, that local governments need to inventory resources and adopt policies to protect them, and have zoning measures to carry them out. These two statewide planning goals have mirrored in the Great Neighborhood Principles, which talk about being sensitive to national, natural features, as well as protecting scenic views. The one thing that's different about Goal Five, which we'll get into, is it's something called an ESEE Analysis, Economic, Social, Environmental, and Energy Analysis, which applies to some Goal Five resources, and we'll get into that later. Next slide. So let's begin with natural hazards. And Tom Shauer worked closely, actually, with us in doing this inventory. And we looked at a number of different types of hazards, which, the first category is geological hazards, which includes landslides, landslides and steep slopes, earthquake hazards, which includes liquefaction and shaking, and what would happen if we have the big earthquake, flood hazards, wildfire hazards. And we developed a point system for each type of hazard that is linked to some 120 polygons or sub-areas within the UGB that were mapped. This map was done in 2021, I believe. It shows the urban growth boundary in the context of the land around it. Some of Winterbrook's work, related to natural hazards, was used when the city expanded its UGB in 2019 and 2020. And natural hazards were used as a reason not to go to certain areas. And you can see on this map, for example, what happens as you move further to the West Hills, as natural hazards become more pronounced. So if you want to go into greater detail, or if you'd like to discuss more detail on the inventory methods we used, and the policy options considered, some of the background studies we did, and also the extensive map that Jamie has done working with your staff, that's something we could look at later in the presentation. We have a lot to get to, but we have just a ton of maps that, to look at, that really help the story, tell the story of natural resources and hazards in the city of McMenville. Next slide. So one thing that we spent a fair bit of time with your staff on is the ranking of polygons, the different natural hazards in each polygon in the community. And when we did this, we were able to use maps from state sources, mainly Dargani, to identify moderate and high landslide areas, moderate and high liquefaction and shaking areas, slopes of 25% or more, which is important because it's a threshold that's used for buildable land in Goal Ten, moderate and high to severe wildfire hazard areas, and land within the floodplain in that way. And so for moderate areas, we generally gave a score of two. And for high hazard areas, areas with a high probability, we used a five scoring point. We then went to the state natural hazards management plan to look at social and physical vulnerability, who's going to be affected most by all of these resources. And we took the numbers you see to the right-hand column directly from those. We added them together, and that resulted in a composite score for each of the 120 or so polygons, sub-areas within the UGB. And then we were able to put those all on GIS maps.
Could we take a pause for questions?
Does anyone have any questions to this point? Good idea.
If people would like to ask questions, just as Counselor Peralta has, please raise your hand in the chat function. It might be a little hard for me to see, so Claudia is going to call people out, since she has eyes on both the Zoom and the gallery. I see Counselor Peralta, so we'll start there. And then on a, because we have a lot of information, perhaps we can log some questions at this moment, but then get through a little bit more of the presentation, and we'll break every, so often for questions. Is that Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor Drapkin. Just one kind of basic question. I think I have an understanding of the concept of natural hazards. How do you define natural resources? And I want to make sure I have the terms of art right. Was natural resources and natural features were the other two terms? And can you define both of those for me? Thank you.
I will, and thank you for that opportunity. So natural features is a broad term, an umbrella term, that applies to both natural hazards and natural resources. Remember, the Goal Five was resources, Goal Seven was the hazards. And we are about to get to what are natural resources in just a moment, and I'll relay all those out for you.
So what is unique about Goal Five, too, is that the city can define what they choose to consider a natural resource. And because cities can go ahead and choose what's important to them, whether it's open space, scenic values, historic buildings, or monuments, or places of interest for the community, it requires a little bit more of an analysis and looking at the consequences to be able to protect those features. So it's really, the city of McMenville came to us and said what is important for them to be able to start having a conversation about protecting. And I believe Heather based that on perhaps the input that was sought with the Great Neighborhood Principles.
Good point. And it is true, is that the resources we looked at were the resources we asked to look at in the inventory. So let's move on to the next slide. Good. Okay, so now, if we look, we're still with hazards now, but looking at this composite map showing where all the hazards are, moderate and high hazards, here's what this map tells us. First of all, you can see in the floodplain areas within the UGB that are being proposed that have a high score, and we're looking at it as being in a protection overlay. And as you'll recall, in McMenville, the floodplain is its own zone. So we're putting on top of that zone, an extra layer of protection, based on scores that we applied using in the 120 polygons. And so you can see the areas we're proposing for natural hazard protection in this drawing in the red. In the orange color, what you see is natural hazard mitigation proposal, which would mean, and we'll talk about this in a moment, that have an average higher score than, a lower score than do the protection areas. And the rest of the UGB still has hazards, but does not score as high. And so that is what this map shows for protection. But it's important to realize that the whole UGB, for example, is subject to earthquake shaking, most of the UGB is subject, except the West Hills, to earthquake liquefaction. But the floodplain areas, this landslide hazard areas, wildfire areas are more precisely And so what is the protection program that is based on the extensive inventory that we did? So in the products we gave, actually, to the city last year, there is a new comp plan chapter, natural features, that includes a natural hazards policy framework. There is also a new zoning chapter, 1749, which includes two natural hazards overlay or sub-districts. And there are some, there are four or five pages of policies to look at, that apply to all hazards, that apply to geological hazards, flood hazards, and wildfire hazards. And these are implemented by the two following zones, natural hazard protection sub-district and the natural hazard mitigation sub-district. So if you read on the map, basically, development, you have a high ranking, a high cumulative ranking that is based on the ranking system slide we had before. Usually that means you have at least one high hazard ranking, sometimes two, sometimes even three, but combined also with several moderate hazard rankings to get to this protection sub-district. And basically, the idea is development's restricted, but densities can be transferred to buildable areas on any given site. By density transfer, I mean the standards of the zone, the next higher zone, in density would, you could apply those standards. So if you had a 5,000-square-foot lot in one zone with hazards, you could build a zone that allows 4,000-square-foot lots, for example. In the mitigation sub-district, it simply requires that you do the studies that are appropriate for that district. So if you have a slide hazard, you would do a geotechnical study. If you have a flood hazard, as you currently do, you do a flooding study. But what we've added now is the requirement, if you're in a wildfire hazard overlay, either protection or mitigation, and any development is proposed, you need to work with the fire department to come up with a plan to ensure that the homes that are built near the hazard areas have a wildfire mitigation plan. In other words, something that allows the trees to be thinned, for undergrowth to be decreased, to decrease fuel, and also to have setbacks from homes and outbuildings so they don't burn down in the event of a wildfire. In the remainder of the city, there are still hazards, as we talked about, but those hazards would be addressed through building and fire codes. And especially for earthquakes, the earthquake standards at the state level that are optional, I think, for cities to adopt. This might be a good place to stop for questions.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience have questions? I think we can move on. Thank you.
And so the unique thing about what we're proposing here is that it's a composite ranking. It doesn't go as most cities do, by hazard by hazard. It just says, if you're in the protection area, here's what you need to do if you're in that mitigation sub-district, here's what you do. If you're anyplace else, you also have to be building a fire code. So if you would like to see all of these policies, go to, again, draft Chapter 11, they're quite detailed, and the policies, again, set the stage for the overlay districts. And if any of you would like to see those detailed policies later on in the presentation, we can go right to them and just, and go through them one by one, if you'd like to do that. So now, now, significant natural resources. What are those? They include riparian corridors, which usually are within floodplains, but sometimes, in the case of reaches of streams, like you can see in Cozine Creek and, like, two branches that the riparian corridor actually goes beyond where the floodplain is. And the second category is tree growths. We'll talk about how we did that inventory and policies. And then scenic viewpoints and new sheds. Again, the floodplain zone, it's a base zone, but you can see within that zone, specific riparian corridors. You also note that there's a lot of riparian corridors, trees tend to like to grow in them, so they often overlap with floodplains and riparian corridors. And you can see those in green. And that, and this is an important thing to understand, and for, that needs to be addressed in the easy analysis, the tree growths, is they often overlap with wildfire hazard areas. Most of the overlap between hazards and resources are reinforced. In other words, you shouldn't build a lot in a hazard area, or you should build carefully. If you have resources, natural resources, in a hazard area, that's an extra reason, that makes a lot of sense to protect both with overlay zones that reference each other to make sure that you have a strong protection program in areas that are both significant from a resource standpoint and dangerous from a hazard standpoint. So riparian corridors. There is a specific riparian corridor inventory, the bottom bullet, but basically, riparian corridors are unusual in, as a Goal Five resource, because in the state rules, they have a, what they call a safe harbor, that you can, if you do that, safe harbor, you can be told how to do the inventory safely, and if you follow the rules, then nobody can challenge that. That's what a safe harbor means. It also means, in the case of riparian corridors, that if you adopt safe harbor protection standards that are in the Goal Five administrative rule, you don't have to do an easy analysis. And this is what I have recommended in most jurisdictions, and this is what most jurisdictions might do in order, if not all, but most. So the first standard, the safe harbor, is that you, the significant resource is measured 75 feet from the top of bank of a fish-bearing river with 1,000 cubic feet per second average annual flow. And there's one river that does that, South Yam Hill River, that has that kind of flow. And so to measure the top of bank, we use GIS to do that. They have a way to identify shark breaks in elevation, and so we measured all those tops of banks, and we overlaid those with the floodplain, so it becomes pretty apparent. You can see that in the darker blue and wider line of the South Yam Hill River. And then for the North Yam Hill River and all the other streams in the community, Cozine Creek, Baker Creek, that are fish-bearing, there is a 50-foot, a significance area, and top of bank area. And all those things are shown on this map. And a question that often comes up about this method is, well, Greg, when you're mapping something at this scale, aren't there errors sometimes? And the answer is yes. And so that's why the overlay zone includes a map correction process, in case the mapping that we did, the generalized mapping, is not accurate. You can always go in and say, we have better data, we've got an engineer or a geologist who's gone, or a web specialist who identified the top of the bank, and you can change the bank that way. There is no Goal Five easy analysis required because it's a safe harbor, and almost all, but not all, riparian corridors are within the 100-year floodplain. And you can see in the north branch of Cozine Creek, for example, it goes quite a way up above the map, under the floodplain. The, I think, go on to the next slide. So, okay, so going back to riparian...
Do you want to pause for questions right there? There was, that was pretty rich in information. We could just open it up to the Planning Commission and councilors for one moment. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, one question. You gave a distance for streams of 50 feet and 75 feet per rivers as the boundary, I guess, for the riparian corridor, for the zone that we're talking about, the overlay. What was the basis for those numbers?
Okay, the basis of those was that, so now we're going back into ancient history, back, I think, in 1995, when the Goal Five administrative rule was adopted, that involved state agencies, citizen committees, that had to go through the whole LCDC rule-making process, that people, especially local government, said, you know what? This is a lot of work to go out and figure out how to do these inventories. They didn't have GIS technology back then. And so how are we going to do this? And the easy analysis is a ton of work, too. Can't you come up with a way that we can rely on from the state? If you do this, it is good enough and effective enough. And so the Department of State Lands, ODFW, DLC were all involved, and they came up with this notion of a safe harbor. And it says, in black and white in the rule, if you use this approach, and if you protect land 75 feet back from the top of the bank of the, of the rivers, and 50 foot from the top of the bank of the streams, and if you protect the native vegetation in those areas, and you restrict excavation in those areas, in other words, you don't build much, except for water-dependent or water-related uses that might use, this is a bit of a joke, let's say, the North Yam Hill River is known for its... Let's say the North Yam Hill River is known for its docks and that kind of thing. But it has an exception for water-dependent, water-related uses that also allows public facilities to cross and road crossings if they're planned. So that's what the safe harbor stays. And it makes it much more-- personally, I think it's quite effective. It also makes it much easier, much less drawn out, much less subject to a opposition, a challenge to the ordinance if you use this approach. So those are the reasons that we recommended to the planning department, that they use a safe harbor rather than us doing original inventories, coming up with original and different ways to protect the resource, avoid the necessity of doing an easy analysis and the cost involved, and also the vulnerability in terms of judicial review or labor review. Thank you.
To expand a little bit more, too. So it's explicit in the rule itself that it's 55, or 50 and 75. So it's pretty black and white. And I believe that comes from the Oregon Department of Forestry and their standards for how to maintain riparian corridors.
And forest operation, yeah.
Good question. Thank you.
Did we answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Sometimes you want to be careful. They ask me a question. I might give you more than you want. Okay.
Any other questions? Are we ready to move on? Claudia, is there anyone else there with a question?
I don't see any hand raised.
Thank you very much.
Tree groves. So tree groves are more subjective, I would say. What is a significant tree grove than a riparian corridor? There is no magic safe harbor to do that. So Winterbrook has done a bunch of these over the years, and each one is a little bit different depending on the community we're working in. But the basic program works like this. Heather told us that the council and the planning commission valued the tree groves that are remaining. There had been some unfortunate incidents where trees were removed for development, and there was not much the city could do in terms of zoning or planning standards. So with that in mind, we worked with Jamie, before he left, Jamie Flexing Spine, to identify, looking at aerial photos, basically, where are candidate areas for tree groves? What tree groves can you identify on a map that you think needs protection? He gave us a big map with a lot of trees, many of which were already unprotected, you know, basically along our riparian corridors, which would be protected anyway. So we focused at a second level and identified by aerial photos, also by sight physics, trees, groves that had palchies, at least 25 feet tall or more on average, and that at least had an acre of contiguous canopy. And then we looked at all those carefully in the field. We walked them where we could and looked at them off-site if we didn't have property owner permission. And we used a point system based on ten criteria. The criteria related to the health of the tree grove, to its size, were there rare trees there like oaks? Were there trees, were the trees healthy? Was this, were they surrounded by development? So that, you know, that they weren't, their values seemed to be diminished. Were they accessible to the property owners so that people could actually see them? Or did they have educational value? Those were some of the ten criteria we looked at. The, and then we used a point system, one, two, three point system, with three being high and one being low. And field inventory, we used biologists to do this work, train people. And they, they ranked to each of the tree groves. Of the 30 tree groves we looked at, 27 ranked above 25 points and were, and that was the baseline the years to determine there was significant gold five purposes. They were, which go through the easy analysis process and decide the level of protection the groves have. And we are now in the process of doing the easy analysis that will look at potential conflict uses and try to develop a fair, but effective program to protect the trees. So what the easy analysis also requires us to do is look at the effect on individual property owners. For example, if a single lot was completely covered by a tree grove, that could be a pretty big economic impact on property owners. So we do have things in place like, you're at least allowed to build one house on property go. You're a bit, for various purposes. But the easy analysis will also look at the impact on causing support generally because it will reduce the supply of buildable land, especially buildable residential land in the community. What are those impacts? How realistic is the density transfer program you proposed? Will it allow a comparable number of units? Is allowed under the system, so maybe that. So we will come to you with recommendations or program that generally protects tree groves. But the extent of protection will be based on an evaluation of the economic, social environment and its consequences of three levels of protection. The entire grove, you don't allow anything. You don't allow streets, for example, to pass through or paths. You wouldn't allow any kind of tree removal under any circumstance. That would be the explainable protection program. A limited detection program, which could involve protecting most of all of the grove, but allowing some conflicting use of the turrets, the screws, the pads. But wildfire protection programs could, in some ways, take away, for example, other wildlife habitat in the tree grove in order to make, have the grove have less fuel. So the grove would look more like a park than like a natural area, which might be better if you built a lot of home sites on the hill near the tree grove. So we're looking at those kind of issues so that when we come to you with a draft code, you'll have some basis for evaluating the pros and cons of the code that we're offering to a lot for you to look at. So those are the tree groves. The other couple of things that are pretty obvious from this is that, first of all, three of your biggest groves are next, are in parks. So they already have a certain level of protection from those kinds of development. However, if you're the park board, park manager, or elected point officials of any kind, you might have a concern that, well, how are we going to implement the park plans that I think are being developed as we speak? If they call for development, that requires some losses to recover. So part of the easy analysis would be contacting parks and public facilities to see if there are plans or utilities or park improvements that could impact tree growth. So you'll have the benefit of their input as well. Linfield College also, you can see, I think it's tree grove. Can you read that?
H5 and G5s in the center of the city.
And most of those tree groves are in floodplain or riparian corridors already, but not all of them. And so it's important that there be some communication with Linfield College, Linfield University, as you say. And check their master plans, see what their program is for trees. They've been there a long time. So our hope is that there are not a lot of conflicts with any expansion plans they might have. But the tree, the easy analysis will look at all those, those factors. And then we will come back with a, both a set of policies and specific code to protect the tree groves.
Should we pause for questions again?
Sure. Do we have any questions from the planning commissioner council? Counselor Peralta, I see you unmuted.
I feel like I'm the only one asking questions, but as long as I have the, it's a topic that is of great interest to me. Earlier in the presentation, you pointed out that this was a little more ambitious than other plans that you've done by virtue of creating these overlays and the scoring system that you've created. And I'm very grateful. I definitely appreciate the thinking that, as you've described it. My question is, are there any kind of known downsides besides the complexity to the kind of scoring system that you've set up and the approach that you've taken? Given that you have experience doing other kinds of systems, how do the, how does this compare to those systems beyond just that question of complexity?
Well, I mean, the upside, I mean, we couldn't have done this kind of plan without GIS and without having rankings. So it would have been, you know, I used to, I began by doing, you know, what do they call that when you take the paper and you put it over and you wrote it on a map? I mean, and, you know, it is so, so good for asking what ifs. What if we did this? What if we did that? And I can ask Jamie, and she can just spit out an answer. It'll affect this many acres. There's the functions and values that would be most effective. So it really is a great tool for you all, too. In case you have questions about the work we've done, you can ask what ifs. The downside, I think, is a couple of them. If you have lousy inputs into the system, you're a little lousy product. So you have to look carefully at the methods that are used, documentation relied upon, and the analysis is done. And so that's why I would recommend, if you want to go deeply into the weeds, you look at the inventory methods and the data sources we used and make sure you're comfortable with all those things. Because frankly, when people appeal stuff, let's say, an attorney for property owners, they'll delve into that and try to tear it apart. So that's, that's one of the weaknesses, potential weaknesses. The other weakness, which comes with all the use of computers and machines generally, now I'll sound like a ruddy, is that you believe your own work as being absolutely true. And I'll go back to the example of the riparian corridor. I can guarantee you that there will be examples where, because the data set we used, extreme locations, for example, was not accurate on the ground. Not that we applied it accurately, but it was not accurate in kind of way. And so if anyone believes that everything in this map is absolutely accurate, they mean wrong. It's a wonderful tool to use. That's why you always have to have the ability of citizens, property owners, people living in a community yourselves, to say, that doesn't look right to me. Can we get a second opinion? And can we get somebody on the ground to look at it? So in that sense, it's more of a green flag that says, these are areas that we mapped and need protection, but they are adjustable.
And just to show as an example, this south branch. So this is what we found to be the true top of bank and the associated riparian buffer with it because it's been channelized. And this eating, eating skinny stream leg is from a state data source that was created like 15 years ago that doesn't accurately represent what happened on the ground. But to speak to the ranking system specific for tree groves, Winterbrook has been using that method for at least 20 years, right? The worksheets. And so those field assessment methods for how to determine significance for the tree groves and how to, how to think about their wildlife value versus their health and their general composition was conducted by biologists and using a tried and true worksheet, I guess, that's held up over the last two decades.
So I think we're doing a good job. The key thing is worded out, you know, it's like, there will be mistakes.
Yeah.
In some ways, you need a way to ground truth. I will say, the city of Tiger, we used the same method for tree groves, for the whole city, then they did a big, as part of the utility expansion, a big master plan for an expansion area. They actually asked us to come back and do the same thing again. So it might have worked, at least in City Tiger, a little bit. Could that answer your question? Counselor Peralta?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay.
While, while we're paused for a moment, I have a question for city staffs, specifically for Director Muir, who I think I saw was in the room or on the line. How, how close are, or how knowledgeable are we of things like the Linfield University tree master plan or the county master, tree master plan?
Your question is, how familiar are we, Mayor?
Yeah, it, do we, are we, there was a recommendation that came out in this presentation of making sure that we understood what the Linfield University's tree master plan was as an example. And so I'm wondering if that's information we're already sharing or if that's future information we'll need to be gathering.
That might be a good question for Tom in the meeting room regarding the process of how they're integrating that into this process.
Oh, that's a good point. Pardon my misstep.
No problem.
Senior Planner, Tom Shower, do you mind answering my question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, sorry, sorry. I'm not sure. All right. Okay, is that better? Okay. Sorry about that. I don't have the answer for that. I don't know if Greg has any information about whether they specifically contacted Linfield during that evaluation or if, if he knows if Jamie might have done that as they were assessing the tree groves. I just don't know the information about that level of coordination that occurred.
Did you repeat the question? I could attempt to answer it.
Sure. I am curious if, in doing this research, you have also already contacted Linfield University for their tree master plan? You recommended that we be aware of surrounding tree master plans. And I'm wondering if you sourced any of that information already or if that's a future instruction for us?
So not, not yet. So we haven't contacted Linfield in particular yet to sort of understand what their future is for expansion. We do know that there is parks planning in process right now. And so it's on our list to, to go ahead and reach out to the public works departments as well as the parks, parks and recs departments.
More broadly, too, I wasn't aware that there's a county-wide tree program of any kind. Is that--
I'm not either. I'm not meaning to indicate that there is. It was more of a question about surrounding tree master plans.
Yeah, and I don't know about that, but we can certainly look into it. I hadn't heard that that was the case. And do you think Linfield has one?
I don't know. In your recommendation, you, you said specifically that it would be good to know about things like Linfield University's tree master plan. I don't know if they have one. I'm not saying they do. I'm asking what other information we have around that. But I think I've got the answer, and it's no. So let me not hold up the meeting anymore, and we can keep going. Thank you.
Commissioner McLealien has a question.
Hi. Thank you. Yeah, my question was related to that also specifically because I don't actually think Linfield owns all of that land anymore. I think they sold a bunch off to Mid Valley within the last few years. And I would be, I think that they should definitely be incorporated in finding out what their plans are for part of the area around the Cozyne specifically. I'm also hoping, Mr. Winterbrook, you could speak a little closer into your microphone. Sometimes I'm having a hard time hearing you.
You have to speak louder.
Can you hear what you said?
Yes.
So go ahead and answer what you can.
Oh, so yes, thank you so much for noting that it may be on by Mid Valley. And so we'll definitely have to do a little bit more outreach for that, those two groves in particular. And then Greg, you just have to project a little bit more.
Are you? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions?
None that I can see.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll all move on.
All right. Now scenic views, I can guarantee you that every community we've worked in, we've done a number of these, too, has a different approach to identifying, evaluating, and protecting scenic views. So in McMinnville, we began really with, with the Great Community Principles. And in discussions with the planning department, the focus on scenic views was on developing areas primarily, not exclusively, but primarily, to make sure of two things. One is that there be policies in the plan so that the city in designing streets and parks make sure that scenic views are a design consideration. That's the first issue. And the second is, as the city does, master plans for undeveloped areas, that scenic views and viewpoints be incorporated into the overall master plan design. For example, you could orient a street to take advantage of the West Hills view or an agricultural view or a view of a riparian corridor, for example. And I know Heather was also interested in making sure that ODOT, and to use this example, when ODOT builds a bridge, that the bridge be designed so you can see the river below it. I think that was the recent case that came up. So what we did is worked with city staff to identify a number of potential viewer areas, and then we went out and looked at those, refined the viewpoint, and then took photos of the views you could see and divide, and also defined the view shed. So the viewpoints are all inside the UGB. The view sheds extend beyond the UGB into farm and forest land, hillsides, to even to the mountains. We divided the viewpoints into two categories. On public land, which could be within a public rights away or possibly a public park, where they function more as design standards. In that situation, they would be adopted as part of the comp plan as policies and would provide direction for design of parks and public street improvements. I'm just making this up, but for example, maybe you don't plant tall trees that completely block the view that is enjoyed by the neighbors or enjoyed by passersby as they drive through any of them. The other category, but that doesn't require an easy analysis because we're not in any way regulating what happens on public land, on private land. And we're not imposing height standards, such as if you were in Portland in some cases. We're not imposing specific, any standards that would apply to a private owner. The other category is viewpoints that are on undeveloped property that could affect how the development is laid out, how a master plan is approved. And an easy analysis, we think, is required for that, but we think that should occur during the master planning process because we don't know what the conflicts are until you have to have a master plan with proposed development that might conflict with a scenic view. And also viewpoints themselves could change through the master planning process because they might come up with a better place or viewpoint than we did. The other thing, if you notice on the drawings, several of the viewpoints overlap with natural resources and natural hazards. And so perhaps there won't be a road in that area at all, or perhaps there'll be no development, so the viewpoint might be relocated to take better advantage of the views that have been identified. So that's how we approached it. And I guess there were a total of 16 viewpoints. Of two, by the way, are on either side of, I think it's Third Street Downtown, Third Avenue, the main downtown drag, because people talk so much about they appreciated the leafy tree covered views of downtown and how can we make those even more attractive or make sure that they don't get detracted from as development occurs. So that's what viewpoints one and two are on that map. So are there quest, oh, and here's an example. Jamie, Jamie, can you explain this one?
Sure. So for each one of the viewpoints excluding downtown, we went ahead and mapped the view shed from that specific point. So as Greg was saying, these view sheds, especially if you're up in the West Hills, can sometimes extend beyond the UGB. And unfortunately, the city can't regulate what happens on the farmland outside of the UGB, but there could be coordination with the county to show that this is an important natural resource that the city would like to see continue to be protected. This is an example of one of the view sheds from point four, which is up near a tree grove on the, in the West Hills. So we have city views here, agricultural vineyard views, cropland views, and then two different, you can see both Mount Hood and Mount Jefferson from this point. So our view sheds were sort of categorized into these different, I guess, natural feature categories that should be considered when, during the, the natural, or during the master planning process.
What is DEM?
Oh, it's a digital elevation modeling. So this is from a state agency. You basically determine, so using a person's average height, and we use six feet, what can you see six feet off the ground, just 360 around? And this goes on for quite a ways, but Winterbrook defined the wedge that we thought would be important for what, what potentially this point could be looking at, and then just features that we noticed within the view shed itself.
Fun part of this was, I had a geography lesson. We all did. Red Hills of Dundee, Grouse Puke, and Amity Hills. I wasn't always sure they had names before, but they do.
Yeah, that was kind of fun.
So are there questions on scenic views?
I don't see any. Claudia?
Nope. No questions.
Thank you.
All right.
And then just to emphasize Greg's point before, we aren't doing an easy analysis at this point because of the ambiguity, ambiguities for scenic, but it is going to be written into policy language, or it is written into policy language for how it should be addressed.
Okay. So now the Natural Resources Protection Program. So, and we've talked about this a little bit, but the riparian corridor protection overlay. And when you see protection, that usually means something different than conservation. It means an emphasis on protection. So if you look at the picture of the riparian corridor in McMinnville now, that wooded area within the UGB would be protected either through floodplain regulations, slope hazard regulations, riparian corridor regulations, it should be called regulations. And they're overlapping and they are mutually reinforcing. And we think, and this is, I guess, a question for all of you, is this something the city wants to do?
Well, since we are a body that makes decisions, I don't think any of us can jump up and speak on behalf of the entire body right now, but if you'll continue going, it would be wonderful. Counselor Peralta, did you have a question?
Oh, no. I was just responding. I was going to respond to his perspective, not on behalf of the council, but as one member of the council, yes, I do think that's something that we want to do.
And so my question, Madam Mayor, was not really as much, do you want to adopt the program that was proposed exactly, but is this something in general the council and planning commission wants to do? Because ultimately, that's the question you're going to have to ask yourselves. And the secondary question is, what we're proposing, do what you want? So that was what I was.
It's, well, yeah, obviously, it's consistent with what, what I think we should be doing. The, you know, I, I did have one question, again, going back to the initial terms. You made a point of drawing a distinction between protection of these resources versus conservation of the resources. And I guess, since you made a point of articulating a distinction, how do you see the distinction and how does that affect our regulatory process?
I think it's an excellent question. I didn't mean to prompt it, but I think it's an excellent question. So in many jurisdictions, they have P zones, Portland, for example, and others as well, and C zones, conservation zones. And the protection zones are state a heck out of it with very few exceptions. It's protected. Conservation means you can have some intrusion under some limited circumstances, but it's, it's not guaranteed to be protected. And for example, if you had, I think, you know, staff is leaning toward a protection program for tree groves. In some cases, though, there might be some pretty serious adverse easy consequences that you'd have to balance. So it might result in some cases in more of a conservation, protect most of the growth, you allow some intrusion. And my guess at the end of the day, we're going to end up, not because I've done the EDS analysis, but based on my own experience, is somewhere between a full protection zone and a conservation zone. And one that, for example, allowed limited tree thinning, vegetation removal in wildfire hazard areas as you balance those conflicting and valid public objectives. In some cases, you might also have a property owner that is really severely impacted. And one, one thing that I can predict from experience is that not all property owners will like a tree grove protection program.
You raised another question for me or a point of view for me, which is, Remy mentioned earlier outreach to different stakeholders, and I think in particular in that context, it was Linfield she was referring to. But the Greater Yamhill Watershed Council and the Yamhill Soil and Water Conservation District, I think, are two partners that I think would be worth engaging if you haven't already in the process. In part, this is related to both tree protection and riparian access. I just, I think it's good to get their kind of subject matter experts to offer their perspective on whatever plan we develop. That's not apropos of this main point, just to the general, general conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. Do you mind responding?
Sorry about that. I feel like we dropped off the call for a second. And honestly, the last thing that we got was the Greater Yamhill County Watershed Council. Are you asking in particular if we've reached out to them or do you mind repeating your question? I'm so sorry, Counselor.
That was the essence of it, is the, the, if you have and if you will be working with, I think it sounds more like a recommendation of working with the Greater Yamhill Soil and Water Conservation District.
So we haven't, we didn't contact them directly. But what we did do, and you'll see this, both the policy framework and in some of the background materials, is we looked at documents that they produced and drew from their work to help identify, you know, significant areas as well as their programs to improve water quality. And one of the things that we are expressly recognized is their role in the process of restoration and enhancement of riparian corridors throughout the region. And one thing that we encouraged in policy and regulation and allow outright is programs for restoration that they supervise and prove because we think that's a huge part of the overall process.
So in both our policies and the proposed or the recommended draft code, we call them out by name specifically, but we have yet to reach out to them.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Other questions at this time? Claudia, do you see any in the audience?
Nope. None that I can see.
Thank you.
Okay. So again, the tree grove, we call it a protection overlay. We don't know its exact, what exactly it's going to do. We do work with staff before we provide things, so we don't, you know, we want to make sure they're on board. And I think there needs to be outreach to a number of groups, including parks and public works, about how this could affect land that they own or during planning for. Okay. So then the next map, I think it shows everything. So Jamie, can you explain this map?
Sure. So this just has our natural resource, or our natural hazards overlay in combination with the inventoried natural resources. And as Greg has pointed out throughout this presentation, there's a lot of overlap. So our tree groves are interacting and overlapping with the riparian corridors, which are overlapping and interacting with your floodplains, which are already protected, but those floodplain areas are also all proposed to be a part of the protected natural hazard overlay. So this just sort of illustrates how many things are moving in McMinnville and what we've been asked to, one, create inventories for and regulations and policies that will support their protection or conservation. Do you want to add?
No, that's it. But again, I guess I'd like to emphasize that, and this is especially, I guess, so Tom hears this, if the planning commission and the city council have questions about the inventory or what's protected, we're willing and able to work with city staff to help answer those, whether it's through mapping or through looking where other cities have done. By the way, there is a whole section we wrote up. Here's how other cities are approaching the same issues that McMinnville is looking at now, and examples of some pretty effective ones. But we have the capacity to do what ifs. And if people want to say, well, what if we had a, I don't know, a different kind of protection program? What would be the implications for the resources we're talking about if we did this? And we could come up with not just qualitative answers, but quantitative answers as well so you can actually measure. The other thing is, the EDS analysis is going to have a whole bunch of maps and tables that, that will tell you exactly how individual property owners are affected by various levels of protection for tree groves. So we want you to have that kind of information. But when we do the EDS analysis, we would like you to look at it carefully and see if we got it right or the other issues that should have been evaluated that we didn't look at because that's what the EDS analysis is for. It's supposed to be a useful tool for you guys to make decisions as opposed to a blah, blah, blah that has no meaning and it's something you just have to go through to meet a statewide rule requirement. So I guess the next slide. So if you have questions, we have a draft appendix A. And the policies have pretty much been reviewed by staff with the exception of the draft policies we did last year for tree groves, which I think are really likely to change before you see them again. tree groves, which I think are really likely to change before you see them again. But the other policies have been vetted by your staff, and I think they're ready to move ahead and move through the public hearing process. I should say something about timing. We will have the EAS analysis completed, as well as the draft revised policies and draft code for tree groves to you by the end of July. That's our target date, which I think we can...
And then also, just a little bit more to timing, too, we are recommending, well, to support our EAS analysis and to be able to go through the EAS, we are stipulating that the natural hazards would be adopted first, and then the Gold Five resource inventories and program adopted right after. So the goal set in is supporting Gold Five protections.
Yeah. And the reason for that is that we have a baseline for what is already protected as a hazard, before we look at the incremental area that's protected in addition to the hazard area when we do the natural resource protection overlay. All right.
Thank you very much.
So, did someone say something, or is there a...
I did, but keep going, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're good.
Okay, we're good. All right. So this is sort of the wait, there's more moment. The other thing that we were asked to do is evaluate your existing tree regulations, your existing flood area regulations, for how well they address tree removal. And we did this a number of ways. First of all, you know, when we develop the natural features policies, generally, we include tree preservation as a requirement for the natural hazard areas, both mitigation and protection hazard areas. Why do we do that? Because trees absorb water, so they reduce flooding, trees stabilize banks, trees cool the atmosphere, they have all sorts of climate change sort of benefits. So trees are really worth a lot in terms of meeting a number of natural resource and natural hazard policy objectives. So we amended, have draft amendments, I don't say we amended, we prepared draft amendments to the flood hazard zone, to limit tree removal conduct zone, which is currently limited, and all the hazard overlays. We also were proposing amendments to chapter 1758 Trees, which have, as I think, you know, pretty loose and weak standards for tree protection. I think they protect stuff in the public right of way, but not a lot beyond that. And so we have proposed a more robust overall tree protection program that's outside of the Gold Five process, as happens in many cities in Oregon, where they, you simply look at tree protection to the land development process, but also limit, and this could have as obvious policy implications, limit tree removal on individual lots. You need to have a permit. You can't cut more than one tree on a small lot a year without a city permit. And you also have to have arborist studies to do tree removal at all. You have to minimize tree removal for your development generally. And if you're in tree groves, you have to meet all the tree grove standards. And we have definitions for landmark trees. If you look at the picture, this is a, in Wardman Park, if I'm saying it right, this is one of the most significant tree groves in the city. And you can see what would be a landmark tree, because it has a 36-inch diameter dress height in the foreground on the left. Most of the trees beyond that, there are a couple of large ones, there's many smaller ones, if they're between 12 and 36 inches in diameter, a dress height, of those would be called significant trees, and we have standards for the removal of those kind of trees. And if you remove those trees, and this is taken from the city of Portland, you can do it, but as a disincentive, there is a fee for removal of significant and landmark trees. Let's go to the next slide. So, again, here's, in a shortened version, what is being proposed. Landmark and significant trees are defined by the diameter. You're allowed to move nuisance, disease, better dangerous trees, if the city says it's okay. You have to have some proof to that. We've already talked about the 36-inch DBH and 12-inch DBH standards. And there's a standard also for white oak trees, which are more rare and more valuable, more threatened, of 12 inches, I believe. And then, in addition, trees between 6 and 12 inches, the, if they're in the floodplain zone, natural hazard protection, or the riparian corridor protection zones, those are also significant, and are generally protected by those provisions of those zones, generally. There are some provisions to allow cutting with approved arborist support, if there's no reasonable alternative. And diameter is measured 4.5 feet above ground level, and we have drawings in the draft regulations to do that. This is a much more robust, as I said, tree grove, I mean, tree protection that would apply outside of tree groves than you have now. It's, you see this sort of program in other cities, they can be controversial. So, but we have draft recommendations for those. Are there any questions about the general concept that we alluded to here?
I don't see any.
You don't? Next slide. I think we're getting near the end. If you want to see the draft policies and regulations, their staff has them now, they've all been provided to staff for review, and I think they'll soon be ready for your review as well. Okay, next slide. So this is a little table we did, what requires an EAS analysis, what doesn't. Hazards don't, riparian corridors don't, because it's a safe harbor, tree groves do, scenic views on public land don't, scenic views on private land, yes, but later through the master planning process.
May I interject right here? There was one note I didn't make when you were talking about scenic views last time. You noted that you made the determination of those scenic views based on a person's average height, which you then said was six feet.
I know, I'm only 5'8", I agree.
And so I'm wondering how that would kind of play out if we went with, if we used a number saying it's average height, but it's really, you know, above the average height, and the difference that that's going to make, or how that up-down affects the viewpoints. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. At the scale that we did, negligible, honestly. So up and down isn't going to really have much of an impact on the view shed. We just wanted to make sure that the points themselves were off the ground, so that things immediately in front of you wouldn't cause any sort of interaction. So like, I don't know, a moderate slope would probably be way more daunting to somebody who's standing three, three and a half feet off the ground, or starting a cat or dog or something, versus some, a person standing up. But the view sheds themselves can be replicated again during the master planning process. So that's something that we have a methodology and a tool, and that other planners can use, and the city can consider, and have those conversations when they are planning the future subdivisions, or what's going to happen in that area. So these are all just sort of examples, but I understand the language of using average height as six foot could be confusing, so I apologize for that.
It was actually the, yeah, the viewpoint from six feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
No, that's good to know, though.
I think it's, in the D on program, it's not one of the sort of defaults they use as a six-foot person, or is that just something that you said?
It's something that we chose, and I have to say, I think I'm going to give bias to our other principal, Tim, because he's actually six foot. So I think he upticked it a little bit more than Greg and I, but it was just a round number, too. So we could have used five feet.
So I guess we're getting close to being done now, and time's running out. So thank you. So we're, you know, we happy to entertain any questions. There's a lot that we covered today. There's a lot of material that's ready to be evaluated, staff has. We understand the importance, I think, of reaching out the EAS analysis to Watershed Council, as well as the college, as well as, frankly, the public works and parks in the city, as well as, this is something that's required to property owners as well, to make sure they are notified that their properties could be affected, types of things.
Thank you very much. Knowing this council a bit, I would guess that when those draft policies are ready, council will want to see them. And should we do one more round of questions? And we have about eight minutes left before we need to start our next meeting, so everybody can keep that in mind in their questions. Thank you. Councillor Prata.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I didn't have a question. I just wanted to make the comment that I have consistently been impressed with the high level of quality that our planning staff delivers in terms of their planning efforts, and it's good to see that the consultants that they hire deliver a similarly high quality of product. I'm really grateful for the thinking that you put into this, and look forward to reviewing the future work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the planning commission or city council that would like to make any comments? Is there anybody from staff that would like to make some final comments? Thank you very much. Phenomenal presentation, and not just the presentation, but for really listening to our, listening to the hope and desires of what staff has conveyed to you in terms of the direction council and planning commission have been leaning, which may be a slight answer to your question from before. And thank you for your time today, and thank you for the members of the planning commission for joining us today for a joint meeting. If there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. And we'll take a six-minute break before the seven o'clock council meeting.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. It is 7:01, and I'll call to order the June 28, 2022, meeting of the McMinnville City Council. Claudia Sisneros, will you please do a roll call?
Counselor Gary. Counselor Minky.
Present.
Counselor, Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Present, here.
Counsel, Counselor Peralta.
Uh, present via Zoom.
Council President Garvin.
Here, and Counselor Gary is en route from Joe Dancer.
And interim Mayor Drabkin.
Present. Thank you. We, I'm waiting for one answer here really quickly to, Jessica, would you do us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today?
Yes.
Thank you. For everybody that couldn't hear that on the Zoom, I hope you could hear the sound of your own voice as you said the pledge along with us. Thank you. Because we are largely hybrid this night with multiple counselors on Zoom, I'm going to ask that everybody in council chambers really speaks very directly and into the mic to make sure everybody can participate and hear, and then as questions come up and discussion comes.
Sorry.
Okay. As discussions and questions come up, if you can either raise your hand in the chat or raise your hand in real life, and Claudia will let me know, so I'm able to easily call on you, that would be wonderful. And I've asked Council President Adam Garvin to do the swearing-in this evening of our newest counselor.
All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly, or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States. And the state of Oregon, and that I will, to the best of my ability.
And the state of Oregon, and to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of office of counselor of the city of McMinnville.
Perform the duties of office of the city counselor of McMinnville.
During my continuance therein, so help me God.
During my continuance therein, so help me God.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Welcome to the McMinnville City Council. Would you like a moment to say anything?
Sure. Thank you to the council for investing the time, and I know that couldn't have been an easy process for appointment, going through all the applicants and interviews, so thank you, and I am looking forward to serving the city.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the hand raise feature in Zoom or request to speak, as we already mentioned. When you turn this up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may send a chat directly to Claudia Sisneros, our city recorder, and we will announce you. We're going to start with presentations this evening, beginning with a stewardship report on city insurance, insurance coverage from Gary Eastland at Haggen Hamilton, and welcome, Mr. Eastland.
And interim mayor, I think you went right through public comment, so we will.
Hey, yeah, I did, but that was efficient, wasn't it? That really moved this meeting along. Let's go back and give everybody a chance.
First, I want to state for the record that Counselor Gary is present.
Thank you. And then how about we try those public comments again? Do we have any, Claudia?
Yes, we have Mark Davis here.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, my apologies.
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin, members of the council. This is a little strange, looking at three people here and looking up at the screen at three more, but I think I can cope. First, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Counselor Payne for her appointment to the city council. I'd like to address the bulk of my comments to the work session that the council had yesterday with the school board. I thought that was a very effective meeting. It was, it certainly gave me, I don't go to school board meetings, and it certainly gave me some insight into how the school board operates and, you know, the, the intersection, I think they were talking about Venn diagrams. That, that's comes from like 50 years ago or something, but I, I thought it was a good discussion and a lot of issues raised. The, the thing that struck me was the, the, that both the city and the school district have concerns about income levels and affordable housing. I think I've heard that pretty clearly. You know, I, I know later in the, the meeting, you're going to go ahead and approve the, the city services fee. I've spoken on that already. I'm not going to belabor that point, but I would point out that part of the calculation of affordability of housing is either your rent or your house payment plus your utilities. And so essentially, by adding a city services fee on top of, you know, we're adding, I'm going to roughly guess about $1 million to the citizens of, of the city that are in the income category that is covered by our Affordable Housing Committee, which goes up to 120% of median. So I'm, I just, I still am not convinced that's a direction to go. I certainly believe the council needs more, the city needs more revenue, and the council's right to go in that direction. I'm just concerned about the city services fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Who's next, Claudia?
It looks like that's all of our public comment.
No one on Zoom?
None that I could see.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, now, let's welcome Mr. Gary Eastland from Haggen Hamilton to present on insurance. Thank you.
I don't see that Gary has signed in yet. Oh, he's here in person.
There's those shades, you can see.
Oh, they're transitions. Hello, everybody. Madam Mayor, everybody, I see, there you are. Thank you for having me on the agenda tonight. I'd just like to go over, excuse me, like to go over the stewardship report, which I submitted for the insurance portfolio, and answer any questions we might have. There's, there's a couple of things that we have been working on quite diligently for the last 90 days, primarily the cyber liability piece, which, which I'll go into in a little more detail here in a few minutes. But I wanted to first of all, address the, the items that have, we do have all the information on in the report, which would be the CIS package renewal, which includes the property liability, the auto liability, mechanical breakdown, and that's all through city-county insurance services. The, the numbers are, are in the report, and they reflect some pretty significant increases the last year or this year compared to last year. This is pretty much in line with what we had, what we had expected. And I don't, we didn't have anything that came in outside of the expected range of increases, but you want me to go through each paragraph? A lot of this, obviously, you have, you have in your stewardship report, but if there's some specific questions, you can stop me as I go through this. The package which you, go ahead.
Unless I see something from a council, I say we move through and then save maybe a little time for conversation regarding the cybersecurity.
Okay.
Do you want to just address that a little bit more, the difficulties with cybersecurity? I think you said there were, what, 17 companies in the entire U.S. that offer that? Can you give the council a little more update on cybersecurity?
Absolutely. That is the primary question that I brought to, to discuss tonight, or at least to bring you up to speed on. Yes, there's 17, 18 carriers who are providing cybersecurity policies on a standalone basis in the, in the entire world right now. They are the ones that are, that are focused on this. The company that we had with last year, HDI Global, was a very competitive market, and they have pulled out of the world cyber market, which we knew that was happening. And so we had, we had started the process of looking, basically, we have cyber brokers who have gone to every market that's available. We, as of the time that I wrote this report, I did not have any quotes for replacement of this as yet, and that was as of June 10. We did get the policy, though. The HDI global policy that we're replacing was a $3 million limit, and it was a total premium of $7,050 last year. The quotes that I did receive, we have, we received, the first quote we received was for the first layer, which is the first $1 million, and that came in from a company which is referred to as cowbell security, cyber, cybersecurity, excuse me. And the name of the insuring company is Obsidian. They quoted a $1 million limit with, with basically very, very similar, very competitive coverage form, which is comparable to the, to the expiring HDI global form, other than the fact that it's a $1 million limit. They both had $25,000 deductibles, and the premium on that $1 million limit was $27,765. So obviously, that was, we knew that it was going to be significantly higher, but that's just for the first million. And so the second million, we did get a quote on that just as of yesterday, and this came in through Corvus, which is another one of the national brokerage or programs, and it's written through accredited specialty insurance company. This second layer gives us another $1 million proposal of $25,067.36. The third million, which the brokers are in the process of getting a quote on, has not been, we have not received the firm indication on that as yet, but just based on the, based on these first two layers, the combined total of those being 54,000 plus, we, in, in our discussions with, with Jennifer and with Jeff, and talking over all of the exposures and how they weigh up against all of the premiums, we thought that this was a pretty good indication that the next layer would probably be, if it is available, will be in that same range of $25,000. And so that would put us in a position where it would just be too priced too high to even consider going from a $7,000 premium to a $75,000 premium. So we discussed what the opportunities are, the, one of the thing, or what the possibilities are. One of the things that we're talking about is these forms are what we call, they include full prior acts, which means that once the coverage is in place, if an event has not been, a known event has not incurred, the policy will go back and cover the, an event once the policy is bound. So we, it would be a risk to wait to place the coverage, but at this point in time, what we're, we talked about yesterday in the recommendation to the council would be to hold off for one month and shoot for an August 1 effective date. The chances, what we would be, see, the, the coverage that we would have in place is a $50,000 limit, which is included in the, in the policy, the CIS policy. That'll at least give us some protection if we had, if we had an event which happened in the next 30 days. The other alternative would be to purchase just the single layer of, for $1 million, and that was the 20, 20, $25,000 premium, basically. So based on that recommendation, but open for discussion, those are the basic opportunity. Yeah, that's what we have in place as of right now to, to offer to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Eastland. Go to counselors for questions, please. Discussion, Counselor Chenoweth, anticipating?
Yeah, good anticipation. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is our IT staff person in the room? I can't see that side of the building.
Counselor Chenoweth, this is Jeff. We do, we do have a representative. Director Burke is on vacation this week, and will be back in about another week and a half, and so one of the reasons that we discussed the delay until August 1 was to give Scott a chance to get back and provide some analysis. He's been, he's been focused on this issue for some time now, and we'd like the benefit of his recommendation as well.
And that's kind of where I'm sitting. I'd like to hear from him what the actual exposure is in dollars to the city, you know, best guess, obviously, you can't pin that down, but what, what, what a realistic exposure. I understand for a, a business, you know, their data is worth a lot if something were to happen, but I'm, I'm curious what the real exposure to us is in, in this arena. Not to say our data's not worth anything, but I just want to understand what can't be rebuilt, what, what can be rebuilt, et cetera.
Right. I think Gary can address that a little bit, and then that can be part of the more focused conversation once Director Burke returns.
Yes, Counselor, this is, that's a really important point, and this is one of the topics of our discussions. The, the IT department has done a lot to set up, to first of all, prevent any potential claims, as well as mitigate any, any events which may occur. The, one of the challenges in all the cities across the, across the state who are in the same situation here, many of them don't have a lot of the protections in place to even get quotes, and that's kind of what's happened this year, is they're coming in, the cyber companies are coming in with a number of different things, like multi-factor authentication and a number of things which are in place or in the process of being put in place, and that is. And that is, those are tremendous prevention tools. And I think Scott has indicated to us that they are, everything was very favorable with regard to those type of protections. The biggest claims within the pub, public entity business from a cyber perspective the last few years, several years, has been what we call social engineering. These are relatively low-tech type claim, where emails have been copied and, and monitored for a number, for a period of months until they can make a plausible email coming from some, one of the persons in, in a position to request a payment to be delivered by the financial department, and then that payment is sent voluntarily to, to the, to the, to a party who is, who is basically set up the fraud. And so you got, it's called a social engineering, it's a voluntary partial, parting of funds, and, and those, those claims range from 25,000 to 75,000 in this type, with this type of an entity. The, but with everything that's been in place, that's been, from the cyber, in the cyber world, it's pretty much with the training, the awareness, all of the things that, that not just the high-tech protections, but just the training of the parties of how to, how to, what emails to be aware of, and, and also the, the dual requirements for the payment of funds, a number of different things which are in place. So that's probably been the most common throughout, especially in Oregon over the last several years. And so the risk on that is relatively, relatively low at this point in time. The second one would be the cyber, basically the cyber terrorist or the cyber extortion, cyber ransom type claim, where they'll come in and, and the, the entire system will be, and I'm not a, I'm not an IT, IT person, but basically, a hacker will come in and place, place a, some mechanism in place, which will read and establish enough information to encrypt the entire system and freeze it up. And, and then they'll come back and say, we'll give you, we'll, we'll give you the encryption so you can, you can actually bring it back for, for ransom. This is, we've seen, you've seen these on the news recently, and a lot of times it lasts for anywhere from a $5,000 ransom up to a $500,000 ransom. But the FBI, historically, always said, you probably just need to pay them because we don't have any way of, 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 of coming in and, or finding them or doing anything about it. But once they paid, what happened was a lot of times you couldn't get these online, they had to take a month to actually get the systems back. It just didn't turn out to be a, a good solution by paying the ransom. So now the hackers and the evildoers are basically coming in and doing things a little bit more. They're trying to steal funds, they're trying to access personal private information, and then utilize that information against the individuals. And that's the other piece that this cyber policy covers, is if you were to, to have personal private information that's made available to, 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 or that's exposed through this type of a hack, then they would go after all these individuals, and then the city could be held liable, and lawsuits could ensue. And that's the other thing that this policy would pay. And those are the, actually, the largest claims that you would see. But once again, we don't have a lot of credit card information on record, we don't have a lot of medical history on record, and so that isn't normally targeted towards municipality. So that said, I think Scott would be the best one to address this, but I think the systems that have been put in place are the best deterrent and best protection that the city has. So that investment, I think, is really strong at this point in time. The insurance, which we would like to get it in place, and I do feel that these prices are going to come down over the next, probably, year or two, because I think this is a little bit of a knee-jerk reaction worldwide. And all these players, there will be other players that will come into this, which will drive the price down, because as, as Mayor stated in the beginning, there's only a few markets right now. And the ones that are here are committed to staying, but they will be more and more competitive as time goes on.
So Mayor, now is just the time to ask him questions, it's not the time to, to discuss this topic, is that correct?
I think we can have a discussion at this time. I don't have any reason why not, but I always like to check my points of order with city staff. I'd say go ahead, Councilor Chenoweth.
Okay, so I guess my, my comments to this would be, if, I, in what I know of what Director Burke's been doing, we have plenty of redundancy and backup, which is the number one thing you need to, to deal with ransomware, if you have, if you have redundant backups in place, and you don't have to pay for your data back because you already have it in backup. So my leaning would be, I, I would like to wait for Director Burke to come back and give us his, his take and his point of view. But I can't, I don't, I don't see the need of going beyond $1 million unless somebody can show that to me. So that's kind of where I sit.
Thank you, Councilor Chenoweth. Other council members?
This is Council President Garvin. I'd definitely be in favor of waiting till Director Burke's back. And then follow-up question for you, Gary, is how much of that airport liability is that premium related to the airshow? Is that?
$600 is an endorsement, that's an endorsement into the airport liability, I believe it was $600. And that is covered in this quote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other councilors? Okay, well, while we haven't heard from the majority, we definitely did hear the desire from the few councilors that spoke up to wait a, a little bit longer, and it sounds like that's the recommendation coming from you and from staff. So I think we can probably move on to the next item. Thank you very much, Mr. Eastland. Is there anything I'm missing? Mr. Towery?
Actually, Mayor, we do need the council's direction for you to execute a signature on our workers' compensation insurance. So either consensus or a quick motion to that effect, please.
Councilor Garvin?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the safe policy as presented.
Second?
I have a motion from Council President Adam Garvin, and a second from Councilor Sal Peralta. All of those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eastland. Lovely to see you again.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Next, we'll be moving to our public hearings, beginning with public hearing regarding ordinance number 5115, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District. I'd like to call on Finance Director Jennifer Quayar to give a presentation of the proposal.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So what the public hearing is regarding is the downtown improvement, the McMinnville, sorry, the downtown economic improvement district that the McMinnville Downtown Association administers for us every, every three years. Historically, we have looked at doing an extension of the, of the improvement district, and this is, we're in that year now. And the McMinnville Downtown Association recommended a slight increase in some of the rates, the first time, I think, in a number of cycles that an increase had been proposed. And so this is the opportunity for folks who, who are payers in the district, and those are the commercial payers, as residential folks within the district are not, do not pay into the fund. This is their opportunity to weigh in on extending the new assessment.
Thank you. This, the, the downtown economic improvement district was also recently written up in the Oregonian, I think a week ago, there was an article on McMinnville that talked about how this particular program has created resiliency within the city, which was always nice to have the efforts of many acknowledged. So that was wonderful. Do any councilors have any questions of staff at this time? Not seeing any. We will now start to hear public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We will start with the people who signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. Claudia is our first person to testify this evening.
We did not have anyone pre-register.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the gallery that would like to testify? Please raise your hand, and Claudia will invite you up to the dais. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to testify? Not seeing any. Does any counselor need anything clarified regarding, nope, excuse me, hold on. Is there anyone on the phone who wishes to testify?
We do not have anyone on the phone.
Then that concludes our public testimony for this evening. Does the staff have anything they would like to add to the record at this time, or does City Council have any additional questions for city staff?
Nothing from staff.
I will now close the public hearing. Now, a public hearing on the approval fiscal year 2022-2023 budget as approved by the Budget Committee with changes greater than 10% in the transient lodging tax fund and wastewater capital fund. I'm going to call on Finance Director Jennifer Quayar to give a presentation of the protocol.
Yes, good evening. So this is actually our second public hearing on the approved budget, and the reason why we need to do this again is because, as the mayor mentioned, the transient lodging tax fund, as well as the wastewater capital fund, in the period between the time that the budget was approved by the Budget Committee on May 18th, earlier this year, and now, we know of the need to increase the appropriations by more than 10%. So that requires us to put out a new updated LB1, which is the form that's in the packet that was published in the newspaper. So that's the reason for the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Does any counselor have questions of staff at this time? We will now start the, we will now start to hear public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. Claudia, is anybody signed up in the gallery, on Zoom, or on the phone?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there anybody in the gallery, on Zoom, or on the phone that would like to testify? If so, please raise your hand, either virtually or in person at this moment, and Claudia will get you up for public testimony.
I don't see any.
Thank you. That concludes our public testimony for this evening. Does the staff have anything that they would like to add to the record at this time, or does City Council have any additional questions for city staff?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing. We'll now move to advice and information items, reports from councilors, and committees on board assignments. Let's see how I do this time. I did not well last time with calling out names. We'll see if I can, see if I can get through all members of council. Start with Council President, oh, I'll add with, I will end with Council President Adam Garvin. We'll go to the other councilors first. So how about Counselor Gary?
Thank you. Only thing to report is an update to the last one I had on DEIAC and proposed trading opportunity. We were targeting July, but we'll, at the direction of Mayor and leadership, move to target that more in the January, February timeline, after we have election cycle, and if any, in all due councils seated. At that time, we'll sort of circle the wagons and incorporate a DEIAC element to a retreat format, and, and bring that to us then. So that's really my only main update, other than, one thing we had been working towards was that joint city council school board meeting, so thank you, staff and, and fellow councilors for, for joining and putting, helping make that a, a reality, I hope to make that an ongoing practice. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chenoweth?
So the Historic Landmarks Committee met, Historic Landmarks Committee met, and we covered, spent some time discussing 436 Southeast Baker Street, and then ended up having to deny that, and will come back before us later. And then spent a great deal of time talking about the demolition code discussion, and I want to give a shout out to this committee for the work they are doing to go through, literally, line item by line item, the demolition code, and make sure it meets with, bless you, Mayor, that make sure it meets the goals and objectives that we have as a city to try to retain as many of our historic landmarks as we can. And that's my report.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. The Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments Executive Committee and Main Committee met last week and approved the Council of Governments budget. I will go through a couple of highlights. The total budget was $8.83 million, which included $273,000 in member dues, and roughly $2 million in, in fees for service from members, but that money leveraged more than $6 million in state, federal, and other resources in this budget, including PGE and nonprofits like the Oregon Community Foundation. PGE funded wildfire recovery position, and OCF was among those that helped fund planning services in smaller communities. Those numbers didn't include projects that we lobbied for in this past year, including the Aurora Donald interchange, which is the, kind of the main route now, I think, to get us out of the Enhill County through Newburgh to the I-5 corridor. COG in this budget is providing planning for 22 cities, including Carlton, Mack, and Dundee, transportation planning to the Mid Willamette Area Transit Plan, Salem-Kaiser Transportation System. The main thing that's relevant for Mack and some of the other jurisdictions is we added three new staff for land use planning, transportation planning, and grant administration. This year's budget also restores a small business, SBA, Small Business Administration Lending Program. We got $450,000 in grant funding for manufactured home parks. And then, good news, I've been mentioning that we were trying to secure $250,000 to do further increases in planning services, and we actually secured $88,000 of the $250 we were asking for, and we're still going back to the emergency board to ask for the remaining $170,000 of that. And then it was recommended to us that we make that an ongoing ask for regional planning of $250,000, so that's what we're doing. Kind of a lengthy report for me, but it was a lot to cover. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. It sounds like lots of good things to cover as well. We'll go to Counselor Manke next, please.
It looks like she dropped off.
Oh, she did. She let me know she had to step away for a moment while she was changing locations. Council President Adam Garvin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. YCOM hasn't met since our last meeting. As far as fire districting goes, I did allude to that at our special work session. The Rural Board voted unanimously, 4-0, with one member absent to move forward with putting that to their voters, so we'll be looking voters. So we'll be looking forward to move forward with them and get that on the May ballot in '23. And then Airport Commission, we do have a new airport manager that's going to be working part-time, 20 hours a week. His first day will be July 5th, which is also our July Airport Commission meeting. So if anybody would like to meet him, he'll be down here at 3 o'clock for that Airport Commission meeting. There's also a Zoom link available. Exciting things for that meeting. We'll be talking about the restriping project with Century West, who's been out there at the airport to help us before, as well as Heather and councillor Chenoweth will be briefing the Airport Commission on some economic development opportunities that they have in mind for out there. So it'd be a good commission meeting to tune into, along with all the other standard airport FBO report and things like that. So should be a pretty packed meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. And McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission continues to work on a plan for how we will administer the construction excise taxes. So that is mostly happening through work group right now, and we're stair stepping it along, along the way, as well as starting some of our more long-term work that's been in our action plan for some time. We do also have vacancy on Affordable Housing Commission, and I believe still on Airport Commission as well, and budget. I don't think those have been filled yet. So we do have those. Councillor Chenoweth, you have something to add?
I just was curious, have they been posted?
They have not yet been posted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, lastly, by the July 12th meeting, I'll have any, I'll have new, for those councillors that are getting new assignments, I will have those prepared for the July 12th meeting. With that, let's move to department head reports, please. Jeff, can we start with you?
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin. I had mentioned a couple of months ago that I was planning to go to London to help participate in a symposium co-sponsored by ICMA, our sister organization in the UK, and Syracuse University at London. Unfortunately, that symposium was canceled, but we had invested enough psychic time and money in the planning of education that we'll be doing that anyway. So I'll be out of town for two weeks, starting on Saturday. Jenny Berg, Library Director, will be your local point of contact for the first week that I'm gone, and Chief Scales will be your local point of contact for the second week that I am gone. I can be reached primarily via cellphone or text message. I'd just remind you that it's an eight-hour time difference. Thank you. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. I'll take that reminder personally and move over to Jennifer Quayor, please, Finance Director.
Thank you. Nothing to report tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Director Susan Muir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you all know that just a few blocks from here, the June bugs are playing to a crowd of over 250 people. That is a big turnout for us, especially for this, early in the season. So we're very excited about that. And just because I know this group can't make it over there to the concert, tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, there is a wellness walk, starting at Joe Dancer. There will be a read and play at Joel Perkins Park, Storytime at 10:30 at City Park, and Wednesdays at Wortman. At 2 o'clock will be a dancer, Wakka Omeokin, performing for the family. So hopefully we'll be able to see several of you at one of those events. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief of Police Matt Scales, please.
The Parks Department has way more cool things than I have to say, that's for sure. Real quick updates. I see with the concert series starting, we did get a park ranger on board. We did up the hourly wage, and lo and behold, we had four more interviews scheduled this week. So I think there's some positive momentum there. We still are having a number of short staff within the PD. We're looking at our eighth opening. I'd like to, I guess, formally announce that Sergeant Dwayne Willis is going to be stepping away from the profession August 1st. So we were going to be, we're going to be down eight. We do have a number of people that we're still interviewing. So the hope is that within the next couple of months, we can get some of those vacancies filled. Good news I'd like to report is that also the city and the PD have worked really hard to find that private partnership with our storage lot that we have under city ordinance and state law, where we're required to have RVs and vehicles stored for upwards of 30 days. We've entered into or are about ready to finalize that contract. So good news there, and we hope to see some progress. There's some progress made on Marsh Lane this morning. Public Works did a heavy lift with getting a large, I think, fifth wheel that had been basically used as a dump out there for a number of days off that property, and that's been towed away and will no longer be gracing our city. So thank you to Anne and her crew, and of course, our officers and staff that were out there. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Let's see, who else we see here? Oh, Director Anne Pagano, please.
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin. Other than our new airport administrator that councillor Garvin mentioned, I don't have anything else to report at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Fire Chief?
Mayor and council, we are, we have a signed agreement from the airshow. We have an operations plan. We have a liquor control board license moving forward. We have an event permit. So things are all moving forward on a timely schedule for our August airshow. We also, the Fire Department has received a $35,000 grant for, to hire several of our volunteers to staff a brush rig for wildfire season through some of the wildfire funding that the state has allocated. So we'll be going through a process to work through transitioning some of our volunteers into temporary seasonal staff for the duration of the fire season. We also are applying for two additional state grants through those funds. One will be for an additional water tender, which will remain a state asset and resource, but stored here at McMinnville and staffed by McMinnville. And one is for a new Type 3 engine for urban interface, where the trees and the tree cover interface with residential structures. And all of those will be brand-new, specced by the state, resources. If we're successful in getting those, that will reduce some of the financial requirements on the city as we move our department forward into the future.
Thank you very much. And I'm just looking through the Zoom to see if we have any other directors on Zoom. And I do not believe we do. Have I made it to everybody? Claudia or Jeff?
Yes, sir. Yes, we believe so.
Thank you. Everybody's had an opportunity to review the December 21, January 2022, February 22, and March 22, and April 2022 cash and investment report. Those in your packet? And we'll move to our consent agenda. Does any councillor wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I moved, I moved the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
Get in there.
Second.
Oh, fantastic. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed signify by saying nay. And the motion passes unanimously, along with the very first vote from, and motion from our newest councillor. Well, well, thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, I'm going to turn the mic back over to Chief Matt Scales to brief the council on a request to permit a waiver of the noise ordinance from Cruising McMinnville for August 27, 2022.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this will take council approval. It will just be through a vote, I understand. A little bit of quick background. Obviously, Cruising McMinnville is a very successful event that we host. The city hosts it, and it is scheduled to be August 27. The time originally was set for 5 to 10. The event coordinator, the, I believe he's the president, is here, Scott Hinchcliffe, is requesting an extension to the noise waiver, basically from 5 to 11, which will allow for more manageable dispersal of the event, when the event's concluded. Under municipal court, or excuse me, municipal code 810-260, the council can grant a waiver for noise through the permit, and the permit will allow for essentially noise to be outside of what normally would be allowed under municipal code. The council will vote, and under the terms of this vote, the mayor, or excuse me, the manager will panel letter to Mr. Hinchcliffe, letting him know that the waiver's been granted and that he can proceed under the, under the, also the requirement that he notify the businesses or affected neighborhoods within that area. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I know Mr. Hinchcliffe is also here. If you've got questions of him.
Thank you, Chief. Does any councillor have any questions of either staff or Mr. Hinchcliffe? Not seeing any. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion from Council President Garvin, and a second from councillor Zach Geary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. And the motion passes unanimously 6 to 0. And we're now going to consider Resolution Number 2022-45, a resolution initiating the proceedings and setting a date and time for a public hearing to vacate an alleyway, RV 1-22. Could I call on our Public Works Director Anne Pagano to present?
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin. I'll refer you to the report included in the packet. It starts on page 157. In the proposed resolution and application materials, we received a petition related to the proposed vacation of a platted alleyway between 8th and 9th Streets and Alpine and Lafayette. This alleyway is not paved or improved at this time. The application was deemed complete and the required signatures provided with the application. The staff report includes the proposed schedule for the process, assuming the council adopts the resolution this evening, which sets the hearing date of August 9th at 7:00 PM. The city will notify affected utilities and interested parties to receive feedback before the hearing. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend to adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. What was that?
I was calling on you councillor Gary.
Oh. Anne, I have a question on this one. The applicant is the one developing, Lot 5 is the one that's getting developed? Is that correct?
I'm not sure of the lot numbers, but it's the property on the corner of 9th and Alpine.
Okay. And this will still, despite the alleyway vacation, if that's how this goes, this will still, will still require the development of Northeast 9th, the 3/4 street development or whatever sidewalk.
I don't think it would change with whatever the requirements are for that development.
So the sidewalk development along 9th will still be required for any lot that gets developed along there?
I believe so.
Okay. That's my question.
Thank you. Any other councillors have questions or discussion? I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-45.
Moved.
I have a motion from councillor Chenoweth, and did I get a second?
Second.
I have a second from councillor Payne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. And the motion passes unanimously 6 to 0. We now consider Resolution Number 2022-46, a resolution extending workers' compensation coverage to City of McMinnville volunteers. I'd like to call on Finance Director Jennifer Quayor to present.
Yes, good evening. So this is part of the annual budgeting process, and we do a resolution so that we can extend workers' compensation coverage to all of the many volunteers that work for and around the city. So if anyone has any questions about the kinds of volunteers that are listed, or the reason behind needing the resolution, let me know.
Thank you. Any council questions or discussion? Not seeing any. I will entertain a motion to pass Resolution Number 2022-46.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from councillor Geary, and a second from Council President Garvin. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously 5 to 0, and I would like to correct the record for the prior, the prior motion, the prior resolution, as well as councillor Menke was off the line. So that was actually a vote of 5 to 0, not 6 to 0, but still passed unanimously. Thank you. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2022-47, a resolution certifying provision of municipal services by the City of McMinnville as required by ORS 221.670. Thank you. Jennifer Quayor.
So, good evening again. This is the first of two resolutions associated with requirements that each city needs to do in order to share in the state's shared revenue that's available to us, which is a significant source of unrestricted revenue for our activities. So what this one does is certify that we do provide at least a minimum number of general municipal services, which is one of the qualifying criteria for receiving state shared revenues.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion at this time? Councillor Menke, we are on Resolution Number 2022-47.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move Resolution 2022-47.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by councillor Peralta, and a second by councillor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. And the motion passes unanimously 6 to 0. Thank you. Let's now consider Resolution Number 2022-48, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive certain state shared revenues. I'll call again on Finance Director Jennifer Quayor.
So again, this is the second of the two resolutions that are required annually for the city to be able to receive its share of state shared revenues. And what this one does is it enumerates all of the required steps in the process for receiving state shared revenue, and we explain how we have met each one of those hurdles. And we have. So I would recommend that we, that you all vote to approve this resolution so that we can participate in the state's shared revenues programs for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Not seeing any. I'll call for a motion.
I'll move to approve the ordinance.
Aye, second. Thank you. I have a motion from councillor Peralta, I believe, or councillor Chenoweth. It sounded like Chris's voice, but Chenoweth, okay. Sorry, I saw the mic go on on councillor Peralta's. I have a motion from councillor Chenoweth, and a second from councillor Menke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. And the resolution passes unanimously 6 to 0. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2022-49, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, making the appropriations, imposing the property taxes, and categorizing the property taxes. Again, I'll call on Finance Director Jennifer Quayor.
So, thank you for that. This is the culmination of the budget process for the FY 2022-2023 budget year, which will be starting next week. July 1 is the kickoff date. And so what, what is enumerated in here, in addition to just the basic information, which will be a part of the budget appropriations, is I've listed out the five be a part of the budget appropriations, is I've listed out the five funds that have had changes from the budget that was adopted or approved by the Budget Committee on May 18th through today. And the details start on page, I can't read that well, on 199 of the packet. So if folks have any questions about those specifics, I'm happy to go into them. The funds affected are the General Fund, a handful of changes, changes to the transient lodging tax, changes to the Street Fund, a couple of changes, small changes to the Airport Fund, and then some significant changes due to timing of projects in the Wastewater Capital Fund.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? Not seeing any, I will ask for a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, make appropriations, and impose and categorize property taxes. I so move. And may I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Mankey and a second from Counselor Payne to adopt Resolution 2022-49, adopting the 2022-23 budget in the total amount of $136,397,266 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022. Okay, to make appropriations in the amount of $88,376 and $768, and to impose and categorize the City of McMinnville's permanent property tax rate of $5.02 per $1,000 assessed value for general operations, and $2,934,540 for debt service. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. And the motion, the resolution passed unanimously six to zero. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2022-51, a resolution removing $1.8 million in American Rescue Plan Act revenue for general operating purposes in the General Fund. Again, we'll call on Finance Director Jennifer Quayre to present.
So, well, congratulations on getting your budget resolution passed. That was, it was quite a budget cycle, and a lot of heroics for the Budget Committee just overall in terms of their time and attention that they put into this. So, thank you so much. Staff really, really appreciates the work and efforts that you all have given to this, as I say, difficult process. So this next resolution is associated with the $1.8 million in ARPA funds that the Budget Committee decided to use in order to avoid any reductions in service in the FY 2023 fiscal year. And we believe that the combination of the small increases, relatively speaking, in the transient lodging taxes, combined with generating revenue out of a city services charge, will allow you all to make the choice to remove the ARPA funds as a funding source for just general operations for next fiscal year and replace it with these two combined alternative sources. So the resolu, well, my staff report goes through some estimates and calculations based on the rate options that were put before you earlier this year with our rate consultant, Deb Galardi. And so this is based on the, if you will recall, the option three, which changed the, changed the amounts that would accrue to the commercial sector to reduce them in order to, to reduce the impact of the city services charge on their increased utility bills. So we believe that a base rate of $13 per month for a single-family home would, would be sufficient to be able to, to change out the ARPA funds for this year. And that's providing, it's an aggressive goal, but it's, we believe it's doable from conversations with Mac Water Online to have this online in October. So if there are any questions about the information presented in the staff report or any of the specifics in the resolution, I'm happy to attempt to answer those. And certainly, this is an opportunity for you all to discuss this choice, so.
Thank you. I'll call the council for discussion. If you want to raise your hand, because I anticipate there might be some, so that way we can stay orderly, that would be wonderful. Counselor Chenoweth?
So, a couple of things. One, this brings me back to a discussion we've had multiple times on how things get into the packet. You know, we have a discussion that goes one direction as a group of counselors, and then all of a sudden, we have an ordinance going in entirely different direction. And there was not any discussion in the dais prior to this ordinance coming to us to change this. I'm a little perplexed on how that happens.
Let me jump in there real quick, Counselor Chenoweth, just because I have been reporting on this process at every meeting during the public comment, and this was the direction that we took from council at the end of May to go forward and have these discussions about pulling out the $1.00 million. And so has been my intention, and I have been reporting in every public comment up until today to provide opportunity for questions, and so that it wouldn't be coming out of the blue.
Well, I still feel like it's coming out of the blue, because we don't have these conversations. Most of the decision-making process that took place to bring this to us was done, not at the dais, but done by some people outside of the dais. And that's a frustration for me. We can, we can have more of this discussion offline, but it's a frustration for me that decisions get made off the dais.
I understand, and I do want to add some clarity to your comments, because I think that it's really important that we have that conversation about methodology. And, you know, we did not discuss any rates or numbers. We discussed how we could make a system work with McMinnville Water and Light, and it was, they're fairly intricate conversations in terms of using their billing process. And the number that is before you is a reflection of the agreed-upon methodology, and those are the numbers that would fulfill that methodology. So there was no backdoor discussions, if you will, about numbers of any kind. So I just want to add that piece of clarity, and then, please, sir, keep going.
And then the second thing I'd like to say is, you know, I, you know, and we can have more of that discussion later, Remy. But one of the things that I asked for, and I think is important, is that if we're going to be going and taking money from our constituents, we should put it before them as to whether or not they want to fund us. And this should be going to a vote of the citizenry to determine whether or not they think more services out of their city government, they're willing to pay for them. We shouldn't just be arbitrarily making this decision without putting it before them first. I voiced that in the Budget Committee meeting, I'm going to voice it again now. I don't think this is a right approach. I don't think it's, and I can't support it. You know, the idea of the ARPA dollars was to give us time so we could do the right approach, and I don't think this is the right approach. I understand not wanting to use the ARPA dollars, I get that. I, I, I was, when I brought up how much money was left in ARPA dollars, I really had no intention of opening this door, although it did open that door. My intent was actually something different. But I just feel like this is, it's hard for me, and particularly, I really appreciate what Sal Peralta said at the Budget Committee regarding PERS, and how much PERS is playing a role in this. It's hard for me to go to the constituents and ask them to pay for this without actually putting it to a vote, or to actually just take it from them without putting it to a vote for them. I just, like I said, I think this is wrong-headed.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Chenoweth. We're going to go to Geary and then Peralta.
Thank you. I think before jumping into some of my thoughts on the discussion of the matter, perhaps I can request Mayor Drabkin, and if you'd like to bring Council President Garvin in. If I could just hear sort of the tale of presenting that slide to this today, I know you have been presenting updates, and I appreciated those, and so this doesn't take me by surprise. I can connect the dots on that story. And I know that we've been talking about this exact thing in this structure, as the staff report references, that this is our indication of how the city service fee should come. And so in front of us now, it makes sense. But I'm wondering if you could chronicle the discussions that you've been having at the table, that you outlined in that slide that brought us to now, to remove that ARPA dollars, if you would spend a minute to sort of chronicle that.
I'm happy to take that on, and Council President Garvin, please jump in at any point. Council President Garvin has been a president at all of those conversations and meetings. So let's see. We had a lot of meetings in a very short period of time, but we started with policymakers from Water and Light and the City of McMinnville, having a discussion about where the roadblocks were and where we could find common ground, and what methodologies would be palatable for moving forward in terms of trying to meet today's deadline. And today's deadline is because of the budget closing and not wanting to have to reopen the budget, which can be a simple or complicated process. But in terms of this, we felt it was better to have this intention come forward with this budget, and also to safeguard against any expenditures of those ARPA funds if the timing took us to a further away point. We quickly realized that the methodology that everybody could come to in agreement on most easily would be this methodology of the city service charge. We also all brought significant concerns about equity to the table, and we spent a long time talking about equity, and what methodologies would work with the available software that McMinnville Water and Light contracts with, and how we would be able to offer relief in terms of trying to extend equity. And we talked about that not only in the short term, but we talked about creating a methodology so that as, as we go forward, we could potentially add additional households so that we were seeing relief more commensurate to the poverty levels that we know exist. And the numbers themselves really only came about after we agreed on that methodology. And I would say that took us all the way up to, was that last, last week, last week and a half? I could ask that question to Council President, or our Finance Director, our City Manager, all who have been engaged in these conversations at various levels. And Council President?
Yeah, that's when we came to that agreement. I mean, the bulk of our meetings were the week of the 6th through the 13th, but, I mean, we really came to that agreement later, in that week of that 13th through the 17th. And then the numbers came out from there.
So one of the considerations was that there would be an implementation timeline, and so if our goal was to get to $1.8 million, how long would the implementation take? What would each entity need to do to ensure that it would be rolling out correctly, so that there was no double billing, which I think was also mentioned in the, in the packet, and that there was some time needed for that? And so then the numbers are also reflective of that goal of getting to $1.8 million. But in this sense, in this year, that would then be a shorter timeframe, so you're seeing a higher rate, because if implementation takes three months, then there's only nine months remaining for collection. Other questions, Counselor Gary?
Yeah, thank you for that. Where are you at on, where is that group at on the franchise fees?
I would say that what conversations we've had are much more long-term about anything related to a franchise, and that those remain to be more, we knew early on that those conversations were going to be difficult, and we made a decision to focus our resources on what we knew we could accomplish before we took the next step. And so I don't have a timeframe to report to you, counselor, because we have been focusing for the last month on this agreed-upon methodology that we thought we could produce a result in the timeframe.
Okay. Do you want to move to discussion now, or do you want me to pass on further questions?
I have other counselors that raised their hand for discussion, so.
Go ahead.
If I may. Counselor Peralta?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to just say that this is consistent with the course of action that I was expecting based on your conversations and the conversation, the comments that Council President Garvin was making from the dais. And I'm in agreement with the need to increase this revenue. To Chris's point, because he's raised this question several times, and I've had the question myself in the past related to how items get to the council, and I have to admit, this is something that I hadn't read in the charter until I saw Portland was going through its charter review, and they essentially removed the mayor from the council in the City of Portland. And similarly, in McMinnville, the mayor's not a member of the council, but our charter in Section 18 outlines the mayor's role at the meetings, which is to, you know, enforce the rules, determine the order of business. And so I think that setting the agenda under our charter is really the mayor's prerogative. So I just wanted to answer that, that question, because I've had it as well in the past, and it seems to be laid out in our charter. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peralta. Was there, Counselor Payne, did you also have your hand up?
I did not, thank you.
Any other counselors that would like to have any discussion? Counselor Mankey?
I just wanted to reiterate to the other counselors that this is, it seemed to me a totally logical steps. I expected this to happen tonight, or at least soon, and so I do not see this as an out-of-order type of situation. I think it was well-handled, and I appreciate all your updates.
Thank you, Counselor Mankey. Any additional discussion? Counselor Gary?
A couple of thoughts. Thank you for the work you all did to put in on getting this here. When you shared that slide, I shared my frustration with the vagaries therein, and honestly, didn't have a high level of confidence that we'd have this by now. So appreciate doing this to alleviate the usage of the once-in-a-generation funds to just plug a hole. I don't think that's, that's to be taken lightly. I think we need this and more. I was pro every tool we had in front of us. I agreed with the nine-month process that the Budget Committee went through and the recommendations that they put in. I think, I think we really pooched it when we didn't do all of those, those months ago, and we're being set back in a large cycle on our ability to really ramp up and, and better deliver a better level of service to this, this growing city. But I really think the franchise fees are less impactful on the lowest-income citizens, and I think this, this is more impactful, and I really think because of that, that the order has flipped, that we should be doing these franchise fees first. But the more privileged voices in the room at that decision time want out, and they were allowed. And the people who are going to be most impacted by this fee aren't able, or have the means or the privilege to be here and speak up. And it's just, I, I don't want to not support this, because I think we need all of those to, to give those people the better service, but I'm just frustrated that, that we're not doing it in a different order, or all of them right now.
Thank you, Counselor Gary. I think the only thing I would add in conclusion is that while we are at a decision point today on the city's that while we are at a decision point today on the city service charge, it's absolutely my intention to continue broader discussions and to continue those broader discussions with the community and using a lot of the advisory groups that we already have as we move forward. That was always, this was not an attempt at a fix, a one-and-done fix. And there's many conversations surrounding our sustainable revenue streams that need to be had with the community, with residents, with the business community at all levels. So thank you all for your patience and your willingness to allow us to attempt to do this work. Thank you very much to Council President Garvin for working so closely with me on this. And I thank you to our city staff director, Quayar, and City Manager Towery, who also did a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time in order to bring forward a solution to get the $1.8 million of ARPA money out of the hole that it is plugging. With that said, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-51.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Gary and a second from Counselor Manke. All those who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Again, the motion passes five to one. And I apologize, Counselor Chenwith, I looked up after I called for the vote and didn't see your hand till after. I was already calling for nays. We will now consider Resolution Number 2022-52, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 and making supplemental appropriations and contingency transfers. I'll now call on Finance Director Jennifer Quayar to present.
Thank you. So this final action here is for a supplemental budget on the current year, fiscal year 2021-22. There were a handful of departments in the general fund that are at risk of potentially running beyond their appropriations due to some unanticipated events that occurred during this fiscal year. They are enumerated in the staff report in your packet, starting on page 217, I believe. I'm happy to go into detail on those if you all would like to hear that. In addition, I made a technical error in the class and comp supplemental budget around the associated transfers. That changed. And so that's a total of less than $80,000 all told of needing to make an adjustment to ending fund balance for the related funds. I think there are five associated there. And then the final supplemental budget item affects the telecommunications fund. Just the trajectory we're on for the fourth quarter indicates that we may actually receive a little bit more funding than was estimated, which means we will need to pay out a little bit more in expenses than estimated in the budget. So this supplemental allows us to add funding there to avoid a budget violation in this area. But it's budget neutral. All expenses are offset by the revenues that come in. So if anyone has any questions about process or any of the details, I'm happy to help out there.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council? Not seeing any, I'd ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-52.
So moved.
I have a motion by Counselor Gary.
Second.
The second from Counselor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously, six to zero. We'll now consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5115, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? Counselor?
Yes.
Chenwith? Potentially?
I'm sorry, I was distracted for a second. You were asking if anyone wants to recuse themselves from this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I do. I own, well, I don't own, my family owns property in the district, and thus, out of abundance of caution, I am going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Thank you. We'll now consider the matter of Ordinance Number 5115. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will the City Manager Jeff Towery please read the ordinance by title only?
This is a first reading of Ordinance Number 5115, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District.
Finance Director Jennifer Quayar, would you like to present?
Okay. Good evening. So we earlier this evening had a public hearing about this issue. And I didn't mention at the time, but we did not receive any public testimony on this prior to the meeting either. So no one has formally weighed in on this ordinance. So what this will do specifically is that while the boundaries themselves, there will be no changes, nor are there any changes in the types of properties. There are two zones in the district. But it does, as was noted earlier, in Zone 1, there will be an increase of one cent per square foot of land area. So that moves it from 7.5 cents to 8.5 cents. And in Zone 2, it will be half a penny for a square foot of land area. So that's moving from 3.75 cents to 4.25 cents. Let's see, what else of note? I guess this is, I think, the first increase since 2007. So it's been a number of years. And those are the basic details. There's a map so that you can look at it more closely if you have any questions about where the Zone 1 and Zone 2 is. Any other details that I might be able to help with? And of course, we also have Dave Rucklos from the McMinnville Downtown Association here. If folks have questions about what the money is used for or that kind of thing, I'm sure he'd be happy to discuss that if those kinds of questions come up.
Thank you very much. Any, Council President Garvin?
Yeah, back when this came before us last time, there's a decent amount of opposition. So I was just curious, maybe Dave could shed light on what kind of outreach was done to not have any comments this evening? That was rather surprising.
So we, I know that the city-
Do you remember to state your name and address?
Dave Rucklos, 2695 Northwest Mount Ashland Drive, McMinnville. So we sent out letters directly to the property owners in the form of an email, which we've been able to create a fairly extensive list now, property owners, so that we could contact them directly that way. And we followed up with a letter ourselves to each of those people as well. The city was provided with that letter. I think you may have sent the same thing out or a similar type version. We did not receive any feedback back. I can tell you that of, in conversation with people in the downtown, that the three most significant property owners that may have had objection in the past were positive in support of this. One of them in particular indicated he thought it should be a larger increase than it's been. I think part of that is because it's been so long. And I think it's in part, too, that we've created some trust and confidence in the way in which we're delivering a product, so to speak. So it's, at this point, it's been all positive, no negative, and we haven't received any kind of negative kind of feedback at all.
And then what do you expect the additional revenue will be that you'll gain off the increase? And what are you going to do with that?
That's kind of the, I don't want to call it humorous, but it amounts to about $5,500 a year, which is obviously a very, somewhat small amount of money. I think in some cases, the increase was proposed in a sense that something needed to be, you know, that, you know, it had been a long time, and it needed to be addressed. But I think all these funds, including, you know, the way in which we're addressing everything, just goes to make the association stronger and allows us to deliver more services, which, you know, makes our downtown the best it can be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other council discussion? Staff? Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming today. I'll ask for a motion to pass Ordinance Number 5115 to a second reading.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from-
Zach.
From Counselor whom?
Gary.
Motion from Gary and second from me.
Thank you. Motion from Counselor Gary and a second from Counselor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. Ordinance number, sorry, Ordinance Number 5115 passes on its first reading unanimously. I'll now ask the City Manager Jeff Towery to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is a second reading of Ordinance Number 5115, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District.
You asked for a motion to adopt Ordinance 5115?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Counsel-
Second.
I think you have a motion from Council President Garvin and a second from Counselor Manke. All those in, and Claudia, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Gary?
Aye.
Counselor Manke?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Garvin?
Aye.
Great. The Ordinance Number 5115 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
That's five to zero.
Five to zero. Sorry, thank you. We'll now consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5116, an ordinance approving a zone change from R1 to R3, planned development overlay and 18-lot subdivision, known as the Elysian subdivision. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? We will now consider the matter of Ordinance Number 5116. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will the City Manager Jeff Towery please read the ordinance by title only?
This is a first reading of Ordinance Number 5116, an ordinance approving a zone change from R1 to R3, planned development overlay and 18-lot subdivision known as the Elysian subdivision.
Thank you. Do we have Planning Director Heather Richards on the line, or is our Senior Planner Tom Shower going to present?
Good evening, council. This is Monica Bilidu, Senior Planner, and I can give a short presentation of the item. Let me share my screen. Okay, the item before you tonight is the Elysian subdivision, the Ordinance 5116, the zone change 122, planned development and 18-lot subdivision. The Planning Commission heard this item twice, and at their last meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of these land use applications to the City Council, to yourself. So tonight, on your agenda would be to either vote on the Ordinance 5116, approving or denying this application, or open it up for a public hearing. I would like to note that the current deadline for our 120 days will be July 25th, so we will need to request from the applicant to extend that statutory deadline if we would like to continue that to open up the hearing for, I think, July 26. So a quick overview of the project. This is an impound site on a roughly 3.79 acres just south of that Baker Creek, adjacent to the Jay Pearson Neighborhood Park. So this is a little bit of a summary. The zone change from the R1 to the R3 is ultimately reducing the average lot sizes from roughly 9,000 square feet to the 6,000 square feet in size. And the planned development, the only allowances that they are requesting is the side yard setbacks from seven and a half feet to five feet. Everything else would conform to the R3 standards. This is a phased 18-lot subdivision. The plans were included in your packet that show somewhat of the phase line, including their stormwater facility to the south and the connection over to Meadows Drive. This project would complete Meadows Drive, which is a minor collector in our transportation system. So it would, a key piece. It would connect this and make it a thoroughfare there. It would also extend Fendel Drive, which is a local, and it would terminate it into a new cul-de-sac serving those residents, the new homes that are proposed. And then this would also have a direct connection to the Jay Pearson Park and the existing trail corridor that we have. We have a roughly 16,000-square-foot open space track at this southern end of the project. And there would be a 20-foot-wide pedestrian path that would connect off of the proposed cul-de-sac that would allow residents to have a quicker path out into Meadows Drive. And then we have proposed pedestrian connections that would then be on the other side of Meadows Drive that would connect people over to the path. So this would do a lot in terms of connections. So here is, here is just a subdivision map so you can oversee the overall plan. You can kind of see the layout of the lot sizes. But they roughly average around 6,000 square feet. We do have some lots that are slightly larger in the 8,000 range, but they do fit in nicely with the surrounding lots in this neighborhood. So it won't be out of place. It will be right in character with kind of the lot sizes that are already existing in this neighborhood. So I wanted to go over quickly the discussion items that were talked about at Planning Commission. Our first hearing in front of Planning Commission was the April 21st, where we hosted a public hearing. We did have several guests from the neighborhood come to testify in opposition. They had some concerns with the connection of Meadows Drive and becoming kind of a thoroughfare, potential traffic issues. They asked about, and then also, stormwater was an issue of concern that was brought up at the Planning Commission meetings. Meadows Drive is classified as a minor collector, as I said previously, and it has always been intended in our transportation plans to be one, at one time, connected through and kind of collect the vehicle trips and local trips, and then distribute those out to Baker Creek and Wallace Road. Meadows Drive intersection with Wallace Road, which is not on this project site, but it was brought up as a concern in the community that there is- was brought up as a concern in the community, that there is some visibility issues on this corner. So this issue was referred further to our engineering and our streets division for further consideration, but because that particular issue, that particular intersection is not directly on this site, we couldn't address it. But we did take note and make sure, kind of where the status is of looking at that intersection. So quickly, this is just a kind of a cutout from our transportation plan, showing that minor collector there, and that kind of, they always intended for that to be connected through in our kind of transportation master plan. And then the last item I'd like to touch on, that was brought up at the Planning Commission meetings, was the stormwater. The applicants, so we did continue the Planning Commission. We had the April 21st, and then we continued and had a second Planning Commission meeting on the 19th. And at that time, we also opened it again to the public to make sure we received all the testimony. But we also came back to the commission and presented with the applicant's engineer and with the city engineering department there as well, to go over all the stormwater questions that they had, to make sure that this development was going to have no additional impact to adjacent properties in terms of the water. There is quite a lot of water that is being collected now, because this is the last piece to develop in that community, so it does get quite a bit of kind of stormwater runoff that gets collected. So with the development of this site, this should resolve, I would say, all of the issues with stormwater, because now there'll be a collection system, and there'll be a detention base, and that will be collecting all this water and moving it appropriately through our systems. So, and this was just a quick picture, that the proposal, you know, adequately meets all of our stormwater master plans, they've gone through DEQ, they've gone through all their wetland permitting, and this, and ensures that all the water is going to be directed to the storm detention and city facilities. So we kind of went over that with all the guests that did attend at that Planning Commission. So again, Planning Commission did vote at the May hearing, they voted unanimously to recommend approval. So, and then, just as housekeeping, we provided the draft minutes for May 19 as part of the materials, and we had just received the April 21st meeting minutes, so those were then included, I think, today via email. So you had those, so you have both of the meetings' minutes from those two hearings. So back to your consideration tonight, just recapping the options that are on the table, and if you have any questions of staff, please let me know, and I can exit out of the screen sharing. And that concludes my presentation for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We will go to council for discussion, please. Not seeing any, I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5116 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Gary and a second from Councilor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ordinance number 5116 passes on its first reading unanimously. I'll now ask the city manager Jeff Towery to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is a second reading of ordinance number 5116, an ordinance approving a zone change from R1 to R3, planned development overlay and 18-lot subdivision, known as the Elysian subdivision.
I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt ordinance 5116.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Gary and a second from Councilor Payne, all those in, and will our city recorder Claudia Sisneros please poll the council?
Counselor Gary?
Aye.
Counselor Manke?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Council President Garvin?
Aye.
Thank you. And ordinance number 5116 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. I will now adjourn the council meeting at 8:45 PM, and I believe we stay on this link to go into the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
So please stay on the line if you're staying for the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and thank you, everybody else. Counselor Gary, are you timing me?
Yes, I was, I was going to say, do we, Monica set the maybe land speed record for a last agenda item, planning item? That was, phew.
Nice to have you join us today, Monica. Wonderful, well, we will now call to order the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency meeting of June 28, 2022. Do we need to do a roll call? Or?
No, since we're just cruising right in.
Okay, consider, we're going to consider resolution number 2021-04, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, making appropriations and declaring the tax increment. Would our Finance Director Jennifer Quayar please present?
Yes, good evening, urban renewal area city council folks. So, in this case, this actually, I think, is the first time in my career where there has been zero changes in a budget that's moved from the time it was approved by the Budget Committee through to the time to be appropriated. So there have been no changes or updates to the budget that was discussed by the body on May 17th. So if folks have any questions, I'm happy to get into any details about process or the data ahead of us.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Not seeing any, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget to make appropriations and to declare the tax increment for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan area.
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion from Council President Garvin and a second from Councilor Manke. Resolution number 2022-04, adopting the 2022-2023 budget in the amount of $1,491,107 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, to make the appropriations in the amount of $975,276, and to certify the county assessor a request for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan area for the maximum amount of revenue that may be raised by dividing the taxes under Section 1C, Article 9 of the Oregon Constitution, and ORS Chapter 457. Will all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. The resolution passed unanimously. I will now adjourn this Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 8:49 PM.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
You were on a tight meeting, Remy.